Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the March 25th, 2024 meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order 6:42. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I would ask that everyone rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would ask for a little call. Heather, if you can start.
Heather Brown, Director of Curriculum.
Yes, Natalie.
Courtney Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Courtney Thompson.
Sarah Julia.
Amy Delanta.
Emily Baker, Student Rep.
Okay, thank you all. We're gonna do our teacher award winners.
Yes, so we have the incredible opportunity to welcome three of our four Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Award winners. So if we can step forward. We have Anissa Terch, who is our award winner for being in her first three years of teaching. And she's at the high school. She's one of our science teachers. And we have Mackenzie Pealini, who is district-wide.
Recording in progress.
Now we're capturing this all. Who's district-wide and is one of our adaptive physical education teachers and is in all of our buildings, which is incredibly cool. And we have Mr. Parsi Ali, who is one of our teachers at Mountain View. All exceptional. One of the really neat things about the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards is that it comes, the nominations come from their colleagues. So, and actually, parents too. We have parents who nominated in the past. And so this is an award that has come through recognition from colleagues, administrators, and community. And so we wanted to celebrate them here tonight. We also want to invite you all to march with us July 4th for the parade. And hopefully we'll hang out. I know it's a tough day because we will hate itself. But think about it. Because we did have marchers last year and the year before. I mean, like to keep building the winners from previous years in this year because I'm thinking about it right now as opposed to June. What we'd also like to do is order t-shirts. You're getting an email from me asking size of t-shirt and so forth. And that will be our parade here. I won't wear one of the Pioneer Valley Excellence t-shirts. But all of you will.
T-shirt sold me. Great t-shirt for t-shirt.
Our fourth winner, Tracy Merrick, couldn't be with us today. And she's an instructional coach at Millbrook. We will be celebrating again with the basically east side of the river at the Lock Cabin in May. The Drinsman Foundation puts on that banquet for all the winners of Pioneer Valley. And there are sort of awards that also can... One more round of applause. Thank you so patient, waiting for moments passed about where to start.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
That's some minutes for a humbo.
Um, to the group, March 11th, 2024, regular session, 50 minutes.
Made by Sarah.
Thank you.
Made by Natalie and Inception. All clear, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. If there's two, zero. If you need any subsequent accommodations, if no, then start.
I was able to visit the front end of the school last week. We visited some classrooms and we've been planning the culture of the building. Remind you of how it is. Well, your name is?
Sarah.
Um, right, according to myself and Heather, I'm continuing to work on the teacher negotiations. So that is going to move forward. We have a court meeting tomorrow. It was really fun. They do such great job to teach our high school.
Uh, Emma.
Um, so you're welcoming on right now the senior banquet. It's happening in April 5th, the building in the house. It's really exciting. The NHS just ran a bake sale to support the Drew Keller Foundation. So the past week it went really well. There's a lot of people that helped out with, but it had a really good turnout, a lot better than we were expecting. Um, the Special Olympics is coming up on April 12th. Ms. Pealini that was just in here is actually running that. She's the adaptive teacher at the high school. Um, it's being working with, it's working with and recognized by like the national organization. Uh, there's a lot of other towns that are being invited. The police, the firemen, and then Key Club right now has sent out a form to all students to sign up and help out. So hopefully there's a lot of people that show up. It's really exciting. Um, what else do we have? Uh, MCAS for sophomores tomorrow and Wednesday. We have eighth grade late tomorrow and then the middle school and high school band will show.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we have enough time for visitors to address the committee. If so, please, yeah, please. Can we sit?
Sure.
The microphone is there so we can hear it better.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Sean Durang. My wife, Heather. Um, we are the proud father of a seventh grade student at Bursham Park Middle School. Two years ago, he was allowed, um, we registered him for the school choice program. We're a different district. And, um, he was happily accepted through the program. Um, since then, he has thrived in his current placement at Bursham Park socially and academically. Um, he's done very well. Um, he saw me know made it very, very easy for us to do the whole registration process. Um, while dropping off the registration materials a couple of years ago, I was speaking to someone in the office and they asked me, you know, we were having a little chit chat back and forth. They asked me about, oh, you're having with your kids? And I said, yeah, she's in fourth grade. She said, oh, that's great, and she'll be able to get him too. Um, so I was like, oh, that's amazing. That's great. Because that was really our hope. Um, after a pretty tumultuous year in fifth grade for our son, um, we were hoping for a different district and a fresh start, and we got just that. Um, since then, he's been doing amazingly. He's involved in sports, have a lot of friends, doing well academically. So we were pleased. Um, a few months ago, probably in late 2023, we just reached out because we're like, all right, we're getting close to that whole, to the school choice decision based on sixth grade for school choice. And we called someone and they said, oh, there's no guarantee. And we were kind of upset about that, but we're like hopeful nonetheless. Um, so we were just really asking the committee to, if you would, um, if you haven't already done so, make the decision to open up, or possibly open up a few sixth grade spots. We know that it would be really beneficial for our daughter to go to the same district as our son. Um.
Yeah, no, just overall as parents, we're happy with where he is. And we would keep our daughter having the experience of keeping her.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming. And I would just say, um, historically, how we pick spots and how we give available spots is based on enrollment at that size. So just to make it clear to anybody listening that specific requests based on specific grades because of specific kids would be tough for us to open up. But I certainly welcome, we're having a discussion tonight about, about that. Um, and our spot that I open up. I just wanted to make that clear that I thank you so much for coming. We just can't always open them on the size of the class. But we're gonna have that discussion today, so if you'd like.
Yeah. It was just suggested to us to come and.
Sure, and thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, we felt like we kind of wanted to, so we feel better at least.
Yeah.
Depending on.
And it's nice to hear that your alphabets student is doing well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's doing very well. The only reason why we're here is because we were given information that was slightly different than the information we were given at the council. Sure, so we just wanted to, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, it's glad you're coming.
Thank you. No. So what?
Um, we'll go into the ELPS Student Opportunity Act. So in your packets, you have a draft version of our newest Student Opportunity Act. New year coming. Uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has asked us every three years to present a new draft of students what you're focusing in on as a district regarding student tuning that. And similar to what you've heard me say in the past, they give you areas of focus. And from those various areas of focus, we try to tailor in on a few of them, in this case, three, that lend themselves well to where we are focusing in the district's smart goals. Something that is actually we're talking about prior to the starting school meeting. Um, so in this year, uh, Ms. Brown is gonna give you the specific details because she's done the lion's share of the work drafting this. But we're focused in three areas. Continued professional development around our implementation of the new PLA literacy curriculum and the new MAP curriculum. Then we're focusing in on how we do a better job co-teaching and providing some intensive professional development, starting first at our secondary school, fortunately, and high school, uh, to be more inclusive with our special education models and make sure that we have the right supports in place. And then finally, taking a look at, and this is something that goes back to our equity audit report that came back to us in the 2019, 2020 school year, um, how we go about hiring, mentoring, and supporting, and hopefully retaining not only staff, but diverse staff, especially as our student body continues to be diverse. So those are three goal areas. More of the specifics that you've got to provide.
Yeah, and I, and I'm being brief, but I want to kind of walk you through what they asked us to do so that you're aware. So that first part is a summary. Like I just said, the three things that we chose from the list of evidence-based practices that they asked us to choose from that were connected to our smart goal and the work that we're already doing. Um, and then the, basically, they asked us in the next session to do a day-to-day to identify disparities and do a root cause analysis to analyze why those disparity exists. Um, and so we utilized MCAS data. We utilized the Crown Gass and TM system data, the survey data, and came to similar conclusions that we have with our equity audit and kind of our process that we do every year just to identify those groups. And our, those groups were our English language learners, our special education students, our low-income students, our Black and African-American students, and our Latinas. Um, so those became our focus groups. And as Mr. Smith said, we are in the process of implementing high-quality instructional materials, not only at the elementary level, but we have math is K to 12. Uh, science will be, science nine to 12 will be selecting new materials next year. Um, science six to eight has already, they're in year three of implementation. Um, and the high school actually is in year two or three of implementation of their new high school materials. And to implement curriculum well, it takes a lot of really robust professional development. Uh, and so that's why this is a priority. It's not a one and done. I was just having this conversation with someone. It's never a one and done. It really takes, it's all hands on deck. And so we felt like that was a good investment of our time and resource. Uh, like Mr. Smith said, the co-teaching models, uh, we do have co-teaching going on in different parts of our district. Uh, but it very much is a teacher, teacher, teacher's model. And there are a lot of other models that we can utilize. Um, not only that, but co-teaching professional development will really help in improve our code planning. Um, and again, with high-quality instructional material, they're rigorous and a lot of teachers struggle, um, which is a normal thing. Providing access to complex tests and those grade level demands for our kids, especially our kids who, um, do have disabilities or are not functioning at grade level for whatever reason. And so we're hoping those partnerships and that code planning will really help ensure, in addition to our professional development around implementing the high-quality curriculum that all students accessing and that we are moving all the time. Um, and then finally, as Mr. Smith said, with the intentional hiring systems, this came out of our equity audit. Population is shifting, and it is important that our teacher workforce reflects the student population. Um, and so if you go to section, section, section three, uh, we had to say that we were going to use their, their improvement targets that they came out for the lowest performing students. Um, section four is how we engage families and caregivers, um, the different ways. Um, and then, uh, section five is where we had to select those evidence-based programs. So if you turn to page four, that's really where the meat of this is. Um, and it talks about, when I just talked about why we're doing these things, but also what we've done so far, what we plan on doing, and the metrics we're going to use to, um, ensure that we're meeting these goals. So we've done that for the high-quality curriculum material, professional development, for the co-teaching professional development, and for our hiring practice. Not gonna read all of that for you, but I just wanted to give you an overview as to what it entails so that it makes sense. Um, so that very first part really happened last, that summary, because you go through the whole process.
And Gordon, I know you mentioned before this draft. Um, pages four, six, and seven, when it talks about the metrics, it definitely mentions increases, but are there targets by which we're trying to increase?
Yes.
Or are they just not been populated yet?
Those will be the targets that they gave us. Thank you for noticing that.
Yeah, those will be in line with the DESI. Okay. And the state when it comes to the local metrics, like if we're saying increase in efficacy of HPI and implementation of measure by country walk through tools, we have like a baseline this year? Or we establishing a baseline in fall next year so that then we can actually quantify what that increases?
Yes, so we are currently, uh, working on creating walkthrough tools that are, um, both calibrated like you're talking about, but also, um, not overly complicated to use. And so we're finding that a lot of the things that come from different physical materials are pretty overwhelming. Um, so we're working with, I'm working with the instructional coaches right now, and I will bring those to the leadership team. But yeah, so those will be, um, in place next year. And it's something that we've been utilizing to collect this thing.
So baseline, we have to establish.
Yes. Talk about things to see.
Any questions, comments? Do you need an acceptance of the plan? Do you? Okay, I would take that motion, please.
That we set the ELPS Student Opportunity Act plan. We create a plan with the ones that 2024 to 2027. Just one quick question, sorry. So then next year, when we're looking at our goals at the onset of the academic year, we should see direct connection back to this new three-year plan. Okay, perfect, thank you.
And one more.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay.
Yes.
Okay, we head out a meeting to do River Side RepCon over the education center. Yes, this is the Maple Shade third grade team seeking to do a state and what's next. Two cars, three, but definitely over the state board. So, um, they're looking to do it on May 24th. And then roughly, yeah, we got.
Move to proof, the Maple Shade third grade field trip to the Riverside Rep House Education Center in Oakwood, Connecticut on May 24th, leaving in approximately 9:15 and returning at approximately 12:40 back.
What you mean by Sarah, second base, no, anybody that knew before?
So cute.
You have, tell me. They're bigger to have a little bit of. Yeah, can you pet them?
I do, I did.
Only if you want to.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, optional, okay. Uh, I believe you have motion made, second, if you are in favor.
Yep.
Uh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. And finally, we have a discussion about school choice for the upcoming school in the year.
So, um, in your packets, we have the most current enrollment statistics. These actually are in March. SIM submission to DESI, so this is, um, our actual count right now. Um, SIM's enrollment statistics come out three times a year. Yeah, they use the October one to really set your foundation enrollment for funding for the next school year. Um, but then obviously, uh, as school years go, there's fluctuation enrollment. So they put them in March, they put them in late June. So this is the most current enrollment at each grade level. Um, this hopefully helps you take a look at where and how we may make the school choice for the next school year. Current range where you have pro, lower enrollment, um, at grade one, so that you would do something around grade one, you'd be accepting school choice students in grade two. Um, grade two at 184 is also a lower enrollment, and that would be allowing students in to come into grade three. That's transition year. That tends to be a popular for families to come in. One of the transition years is everybody moving to a new school. Um, you also, which you've done in the past, if you look at grade four, you definitely have 188. Uh, generally, in three, four, five, you can have enrollment up to at least 200 and you're not going to stretch class size too much. Um, I wouldn't say the same for Millbrook. You could stay under. You have sort of the 190 threshold, and you could do even better with class size. And then certainly our secondary level, um, you add for long time that actually class sizes in terms of grade levels over 200. We're not seeing that as much anymore, but you could certainly approach 200 in terms of the grade level. Yeah, six, but they're, they'll be going to grade seven.
Right.
And grade five.
Yeah, so grade five is another area. You have 184, relatively low in terms of the grade level enrollment. You could add there, which we've done in the past.
It's kind of nice to align up with those two transitioning.
Yeah. Right, yeah. It doesn't always do that. You know, this last year, we accepted students hoping grade four in.
Yeah. So with that being said, the criteria that we generally try to use are smaller class size, transition year, and lower grades. So with that said, and with 43 out.
Right, so, um, so I also included in your packet of chart that gives you from fiscal year 15 through fiscal year 24, um, the enrollment trends just on school choice. And so up until, um, fiscal year 21, we were just a district that was sending students. And you see that that started to increase and then had a slight dip, but is increasing again, at least from last year to this year. But the last two years, we have been accepting more school choice students than sending out school choice students. So we're at this year, 43 students across grade levels who are in our district under the school choice program. And we have 33 students who will go out through the school choice program to other districts.
That doesn't include charge schools?
Line through charge schools.
Yes.
There's not. At district placement, it's, uh, in special education.
Yeah.
Um, and still, yeah, it's still considered an ELPS student.
And they have their own transportation to school.
Yes, so if you come into any district through the school choice program, the transportation is on the family to get the students to.
They're really based on 24, we're only really top 10 kids.
Correct, yeah.
And our overall.
It does.
Do they, do siblings get first schools?
So, yeah, according to DESI, if you have a slot open that lines up with current choice students' sibling, you have to give priority to the non-sibling. And then you, any other seats would be open for a lot of them.
But just worth mentioning again, in the future, that taking specific requests based on individuals is not going to serve as well. It's more based on the small classes.
Yeah, been to work out.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate from the property. Certainly, everybody's work.
And last year, we looked at grade three and four.
They were not transitioning. But so my thought was, um, because we are a net academy, that we don't need a necessarily huge group. And if we could focus on the younger families here, that would be the second and the third, possibly the fifth and the sixth, with a total number of maybe eight, and we can sort of discuss it for and for. Um, and Courtney reminded me to, that worth mentioning, second and the third does split up into two different schools, like within two per school. And I don't think they're mean on each other necessarily, individuals, but.
Not necessarily, but we do new student orientation, so it's nice to get a few people that you can put around that are new to school.
Why would they pick only eight or why?
Because we're at 43 students already. And if we were, if we keep the pace of 12 per year, then we're gonna get well over 100 pretty quick. I don't know what the magic number is. So I'm just, because we're in net 10 already, we just thought we might slow it down at 12. I'm not stuck on that stuff. That was reasonable. It fit into that 184 number pretty nicely, giving the same as the 43. You know, I mean, morning, 30, 6, and all, you know, which is still a visible number. I think the 165 is nice for that small, for first grade. You know, it's a small number, but it's nice to have small classes. And that one tends over time to change quicker and more. Right.
In there.
Yeah.
But just to give you an idea, so this year, we have 156 kindergarteners. Last year, we had 158 kindergarteners. And you can see grade, grade one is 165. So we grew over some as students were coming into first grade.
And families tend to move in town. I feel like in the younger years, there's students education. So we get that little. Beast on the number, so.
Maybe just grade two within style.
Three is changing sexually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything, just because it says three and six, anything we'd want to do for me?
We have in the past, I think it's been mentioned by multiple members in the past that earlier on is more advantageous both the students and the district in terms of evolving the student. And so I see value in that, but I mean, it's, it is the same number.
Yeah, eight is true.
Yeah, it would be 900.
Well, yeah, unless, unless you're bringing someone out of their home district and you go to a school, and they hit him past that senior.
Yeah. He's a 200-ish.
Emily, any thoughts on?
Not really.
Yeah.
Not now.
You understand what it is though.
No, I definitely do, yeah.
Yeah, cool. But you see the class size, and so this is this year. They'll, they'll be next year's.
Yeah.
I don't think you're gonna overload either of those grade levels at grade three next year or grade six. I mean, you look at grade six this year, we have 210.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll most likely do below that. Even if you add more students from school choice, we get some movement, which we will probably get to. Everybody's hearing that.
That's right, yeah. No, I figured I missed that. No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, please proceed.
Basically, I'm saying next year.
Make, make available.
Make available for additional.
Probably that's it.
Yep. At grade three and grade six.
The. Only in grade three you're going to get. Okay. Motion made by Emily. Second by, no, in the next question. All clear, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay.
Very much. Get that back on the website for habit value. I'll put something in the reminder once we have the, uh, application set up.
You actually got quite a few calls today.
Sure. Yeah. Oh. Okay, uh, we've come to the end of our evening. So Emily, thanks for being here. Jamie, thanks for being here and all the efforts. And I will change motion for Jeff, please.
Aye.
Motion made by Sarah. Second by, no, in the next question, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay.